Besides your home, Rodney. As long as it's... I've got to wait until six o'clock. She told me, because she told me I've got to wait until six o'clock. Look at your agenda, Mr. Char. Hey, Ms. O'Connor, stand back.
The last one of this season, last long game. Yeah, I can thank you, but I can't get ready for it. The last one.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting, City River Board of Commissioners, September 13, 2022. Tonight, we're going to have the pledge led by Commissioner Rodney Court, followed by invocation by Commissioner Truman Tinsley III. But before we do that, if we could all stand and take a moment of silence just to reflect on the life and sacrifices of Dr. Rank, killer, and our community. Thank you.
Please join me, please. I plead the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the goodness of liberty and justice for all.
Most questions have been forward. We're here today to ask your blessings and guidance on our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the government of the city and its people. We pray in the name. Thank you. We have the agenda as presented. We have a motion to approve. Mr. Ford with the motion. Mr. Murray with the second. All in favor of approving the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Under Presentations and Delegations, we're recognizing Carrie Stevens, Code Enforcement Officer, as the August 2022 Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. Staff Attorney Kelsey Cardon will address. Good evening, welcome.
Hello. I'm going to go ahead and handle these off first. As I mentioned in my nomination, I've been working with Carrie since January when I started prosecuting code cases. And if there's one thing that I've learned about her at this point, it's that she's going to hate the fact that I'm up here making a speech and making her the center of attention. She's an exceptional member of our code enforcement team, and I would like to emphasize that it is that, it is a team, but Carrie stood out in August for numerous reasons. First and foremost, I think you'd be hard pressed to find any police officer, ADA, solicitor, or any other person on the law and order side of things, myself included, who has a case file that is as meticulous in details as hers is. She can go out to a property four to five different times, just being able to track the progress on the case, and it makes it 10 times easier to prosecute those cases. But more importantly, it provides some vital credibility to code enforcement that is needed for our court and is needed within the public. She may not realize it yet, but I'm planning on having our code enforcement team adopt some of her methods going forward on our cases, because I think that it makes us better, it makes our code enforcement better. In addition to those exceptional organization skills, Carrie has also astounding number of cases, and really just the volume is something that really stood out to me in August. Most of those cases have actually been resolved without court intervention, and to me, that is the most exceptional piece of all. Her ability to be able to resolve cases without bringing them into court simply by communicating with citizens is a real testament to her dedication, her patience, and her efficiency. She gives 110% to this job, and she is very deserving of the Strongest Link Award from August.
Excellent. Congratulations. I guess she didn't want to make a speech after. Need to get a picture.
She probably won't.
All right. Next item is for St. Griffin, please Department Investigator Jason McKinney with the Distinguished Service Citation for Valor for His Heroic Acts of June 25, 2022. City Manager Jessica O'Connor will address.
This is another one that's going to be mad that he's up here, but Investigator McKinney. I don't think Jason even knew that he was going to be recognized for this award until maybe he a couple of weeks ago. Yes, and I didn't even know that this award existed until after I heard what he had done and decided to start looking through our personnel policy to see exactly what it meant that I could really award him with. And this is actually in the personnel policy as a distinguished service citation for valor. It has not been given that I can find since at least 2012 when we had online agendas. So this is something that is few and far between, but in my opinion, definitely warranted at this point. We actually have Mr. and Mrs. Pippin here as well with their daughters. Someone asked if they'll come up here. What happened is on a night in June, and of course I won't forget the day, I bet they can tell us. 25th, there we go. Mr. Pippin was out for an eight mile run, and he was just now coming back into his subdivision, and he ended up collapsing of a heart attack with 100% blockage. And Investigator McKinney, off duty, came into the neighborhood and saw him laying there and started CPR. ICU nurse said, had he not done that, Mr. Pippin would not be standing right here right now with his family. So in my opinion, this is something that needs to be awarded to Officer McKinney, even though he thinks this is an everyday thing for him. So unfortunately, we have had a, are working on a custom medal for him to have, but it is not here yet. So he will receive that at some point, but I wanted to recognize him, and Pippin's wanting to make sure he was recognized as well, so that is why we're here.
Excellent. Would you like to make a statement?
Guys, I'll just want to say one thing. Each day, we're given the opportunity to make a difference in someone's life, and you never know what that day holds. On the 25th, I was out for a run, never had any expectation of that being the last day of my life. This young man gave me a chance to make a difference in someone else's life, and I'm asking everybody here and everybody that I have a chance to reach out to, let's take a minute and let's look at what we can do for one another in this world, how we can make a difference and lead by this young man's example. Without him, I wouldn't be here for my wife and my family, my friends, and all the opportunities. You can't say thank you when the man saves your life. Every day is a new opportunity. Every day is another reason to say thank you, and I never again will have a worse day of my life because of this young man. So I want to tell you how much he means and his acts of stepping out and just leading the charge to say to me, I've always said that it's not what I deserved is what's happened to me, and I'm very thankful. I can't tell you enough how much it means to me, and I hope it builds a friendship, because I'm going to tell you something, this is the guy you want on your team. Next run, we're going together. But thank you, everybody. I appreciate it very much.
Do you want to go?
Wow. That's spectacular. Item three is presentation of a proclamation declaring September 15, 2022 to October 15, 2022 to be Latin Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Griffin. Members of the City of Griffin employees Diversity and Inclusion Team will accept this proclamation. So that group, love to have you join me. Get ready for group photo. Welcome, everybody. How are y'all doing? How's the Citizens Diversity and Inclusion Team doing? Well, thank you all for your sacrifice and time. So tonight, we're going to issue a proclamation Latino Hispanic Heritage Month 2022, where as the nation celebrates Latino Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15, 2022 to October 15, 2022, and where as this month-long celebration recognizes the valuable contributions made by residents to Latino and Hispanic descent to all aspects of American life, including leadership in public service, business, the arts, education, and civil rights. And where as Latino Hispanic Heritage Month provides a special opportunity for teachers in schools as well as public and private organizations to focus on the many Latino Hispanic Americans who lives, lives have shaped our common history and heritage. And where as this proclamation will highlight the importance of celebrating our city's multiculturalism and working together to achieve our goals, now therefore be resolved at the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin does hereby proclaim September 15, 2022 through October 15, 2022 Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Griffin, and urges all citizens to recognize the role that our Latino and Hispanic community has played in enhancing, contributing to the rich diversity of our city. Witness here, where I have here on today's set my hand and cause a sealed City of Griffin to be affixed on this 13th day of September in the year of our Lord 2022. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. This is another exciting proclamation, so we're going to get a group photo. So team, come together. And then we'll make a couple of comments if you'd like. What's our deal with the chairman? Looking at the shot lady right there.
Y'all gonna have to... Student, get closer, please. I'm sorry. Ready? One, two, three. All right. Great.
That a team?
So I'm just gonna have a really brief comment. It has been an absolute honor to be on Edit. That is our Employee Diversity and Inclusion Team, and it is a fantastic group. I wanted to say thank you so much to the City of Griffin, to our commissioners, and to Mayor Holberg for your support in everything that we're doing, and I'm really excited about where we're going with this. So again, I'm excited to accept, we are on behalf of Edit, accept the proclamation and to celebrate this, and I wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you so much. Next item is to present the 2022 GAWA People's Choice Award to the City of Griffin's Water Drinking Staff by Cornell Sims, Georgia Section of American Water Works Association Chair, Director of Watershed Management Brandon Lewis will address. Welcome and good evening, sir.
Good evening. So we are very happy to be here to bring Mr. Cornell Sims from the Georgia Section of American Water Works Association here. Many of you know that we've won this award by now, but if you didn't believe us, that's why he's here. Make it official. We also have Mike Melton and Matt Jones with us, Water Operations Manager, Steel Branch Water Plant Manager, Superintendent, sorry, to join us. Cornell's going to tell you all about this award, but I'm just going to say, if we meet all the regulations, 100%, which we have for 15 years running at both plants, and it doesn't smell good or taste good, it's not going to mean much to anyone. So this is a pretty big deal. We're very proud of it.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Brandon. Said a lot of what I was going to already say. So I'm just here as the GAWA Chair. So with the American Water Works Association, it was established in 1881. It was established with 22 members at that time. So now, we have over 57,000 members nationally and internationally. So in the Georgia section, we have over 1,000 members. So we work in conjunction with the Georgia Association of Water Professionals. So what we do at our annual conference that we have every year, what we have is the People's Choice Award for the Best Taste in Water. You know, we're trying to get rid of bottled water. So with this award, we have judges that, they do a test on the water without knowing, you know, where it came from. So when they did the hunt test, the City of Griffin, you know, won the People's Choice Award. So just a huge congratulations from the Georgia Section of AWWA. Y'all doing great things here in the City of Griffin at both of your water plants. I talked with Mike earlier, and one of the interesting fact that he told me is that one of your, your surface water treatment plant has been operating for nearly 100 years. So that is another huge accomplishment that y'all are doing here in the City of Griffin. So just from the Georgia section, from winning the Best Taste in Water for the People's Choice Award, I say congratulations.
Thank you so much for your time and coming out today. And our final item under Presentation and Delegations is to receive financial reports for July 2022. City Manager Jessica O'Connor will address.
This is just the first month of the fiscal year, this is the July report, so there's really not a lot to report on. What I will make note of, though, is that already we are at 144% of budget from what we expected at this time in regards to our key spots collections, so that is great news and something we're pointing out now. So moving in the right direction.
Are there any questions on financials? Moving under Citizens' Comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission may be served the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters to main city business and may reverse speakers to the city manager or other staff resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Anybody on the left side? Is there anybody on my right side like to come before you? Last call. Okay. Moving into public hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow people, or allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. First item tonight is received comments regarding a resolution to adopt the 2022 calendar year tax mileage rate at the rate of 7.083 mils. City Manager Jesse O'Connor will address.
Good evening. As has been mentioned, this is actually the third public hearing for our mileage rate, which is required by law. It has also been advertised twice in the local legal organ of the Griffin Daily News, the first time being Tuesday, August 16, and the second time being Tuesday, September 6. A quick, just PowerPoint presentation of the mileage rate. Our historical mileage rates, as you can see, from 2012 all the way up to 2019, they were reduced every year from that time. Starting in 2019, staff has made the recommendation, and the board has approved that the mileage rate remain the same at 7.083. At this time for 2022, we are also asking not to adopt the rollback rate and keep the mileage rate at 7.083. What that means in numbers is that our 2021 net digest was 651,786, 651 million, 786,950. Our 2022 net digest is 725,797,312 dollars. Those reassessments and other digest changes are about $74,000. So in order to keep the exact amount of tax revenue that we would receive the same from last year, we would have to take the rollback rate at 6.258. If you do that for the revenue that we budgeted for this fiscal year, we budgeted 4.248250 million dollars. That rollback rate, if we collected 100%, would be a little over 4.5. At 95%, would be a little over 4.3, and at 90%, would be a little over $4 million. That all sounds well and good, except for when you realize that we only collect about 90% of our budgeted revenue. So if that's the case, if you look at it from the current mileage rate standpoint, and you have 100% collection, you're looking at a little over $5.1 million. At 95%, you're looking at about $4.88 million, and at 90%, you're a little over $4.6 million. Again, that sounds okay if you're going to collect 90% for what we've budgeted. However, our property tax collections, if they remain at 89.8%, which is where they are in FY '22, we would expect to receive about $4.61 million, which again is great news, but as we all know, we have already experienced several unbudgeted and inflationary expenses in fiscal year '23. These are already occurred. So if you're looking at just a lot of the general fund stuff for equipment and supply costs, the access control that we're, sorry, locked you out of the back door earlier tonight, has increased 18.3%. Our fire turnout here has increased almost 32%. Boots for our police officers have increased over 27%. When you get into the enterprise funds, it's actually even worse. Our filter costs for water wastewater is over 38% increase, and our transformers are about 100% increase from what they were last year. Our labor costs are the same way. Overtime for the Griffin Police Department increased 51% in FY '22. I will point out, because I was asked this by a citizen at the last hearing, we do have some of that budgeted because we have so many unexpendated salaries, because we are unable to recruit or retain officers, because our pay is not quite right. Our contracted polygraph testing has already increased 11%. The landfill analytics that we have to do for methane testing to keep our landfill open has increased over 41%. And a senior engineer for transportation purposes and public works has increased 20%. All of this, of course, has nothing to do with the compensation study. As we all agree, at the beginning of the year, that was a goal for all of us, both staff and the board, in order to make sure that we can retain our talent that we have here, and I think tonight is a very good example of what we have. I want to make sure that we are able to keep that here. Our compensation study, these are still preliminary figures, although we are finalizing them by the day. This was actually just got done with the police department and fire today, although we haven't had a chance to talk about them. So this is again just preliminary, and this is to get us to the average of what everybody else is. This is not going to get us in the top 25%, even, but get us to the average of the market at this point, which is about a $1.365 million adjustment. We balanced the budget in May without taking this into account, made you aware of that then, and told you at that time that my suggestion was probably going to have to be that we did not take the rollback rate. My recommendation has not changed. I'm asking that you adopt the current mileage rate of 7.083 mils. Are there any questions?
Any questions on the board? Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. This is a public hearing. At this time, is anybody on my left side like to come before the board to make a statement? Have any questions? Anybody on my left side? Is there anybody on my right side like to come before the board to ask any questions, make any statements? Last call? All right. Moving into item seven, in public hearings is received comments regarding variance request to reduce buffer requirements in the PCD zoning district for the property located at 1443 and 1449 Pine Drive. Director of Planning Development Chad Jacobs will address. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. What we have before you is a request to reduce the buffer requirement in the PCD zoning district. PCD requires that any commercial use that is contiguous to a residential use have a 30-foot buffer that separates those two. We have an applicant, Trey Ivy Investing, that is looking to do a commercial development in the Pine Drive area, and they need a little bit extra space in order to make fit the building and the required parking requirements that we have under Articles Eight and Nine. They need a little bit of extra space there. It is worth noting that the entire area in this section of the city is zone PCD as well, even though the adjacent property is a residential use, it is a legal non-conforming use, or we more commonly refer to as grandfather. Because there is that requirement within the PCD language, they do need to come before y'all and ask this reduction. There's two properties that are in play here, and they're going to combine those two, and we're recommending to approve this down from 30, from 30 feet down to 15, and also with the condition that they combine the properties. That I'll be more happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mrs. Commissioner. Of course I have a question. Okay, so I'm in the, maybe the application packet. Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the image, the map.
Yes, ma'am.
So the east side, I see the one that's next for the PCD property. So there's a tree line.
Yes, ma'am.
The property line runs through the tree line.
Correct.
So it's 30 feet from, from, well, 15 feet from the middle of the tree line.
Yes, so where that property line is, where you kind of see that imagery of the tree line, what they would be asking for is to go down from 30 feet down to 15.
So in technicality, does that maintain this tree line here, or will that go into the tree line?
It would depend on which side of that property line those trees are on. So any of that are on the applicant's side, the smart thing for them to do would be to maintain that existing vegetation and then to fill in with their gaps.
So just out of curiosity, what do you do if like literally there is a tree in the middle? Because even though this is PCD, like obviously someone lives there right now. So I'm...
The tree would stay. There would be no reason to take it down.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm not wanting this, even though I'm understanding it's legal non-conforming, I'm also just trying to be mindful that somebody lives there.
Absolutely.
And the impact it'll have on them. So, but the expectation is right now is that there will still be a tree buffer between this house where the people are living.
Yes, and it'd be a vegetative buffer. So it's just going from 30 down to 15.
Okay.
Any other questions, the board members? You have this a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody on my left side like to come before the board on this matter? Anybody on my left side? Is there anybody on my right side like to come before the board? Right side, anybody? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Moving into the consent agenda, we have items eight through 14. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items eight through 14? Mr. Murray with motion, second by Commissioner Brock. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Moving into the regular scheduled agenda, item 15 is considered resolution, adopting to 2022 calendar year property mileage rate at 7.083. And I'll make a motion to approve the mileage rate at 7.083. Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Tinsley with a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of the mileage rate at 7.083, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Moving into item 16, consider variance request, reduce buffer request in PCD zoning district for property located at 1443 and 1449 Pine Drive, with the condition of it being combined into a, into one parcel. Good motion to approve the request. Mr. Murray with a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item 17 is consider the minutes of the City of Griffin and Commissioner's workshop meeting on August 23, 2022. Commissioner Tinsley was absent, Commissioner Flowers was on Zoom meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mr. Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. So all in favor, hands up. So we get five, zero, two. With Commissioner Tinsley, Flowers abstaining. Item 18 is, I'm sorry.
That's not considered to be a committee?
It was a workshop. I still do it.
Excuse me.
Okay, I'm a six.
She's a six, zero, one. For clarification, Mr. Attorney, in terms of people being on Zoom meetings, we've been told that they can't vote, like we have authority meetings and stuff like that.
I don't know why she, as long as she had a quorum here present, you had a meeting, and the law allows her to participate by Zoom a limited number of times each year. So I think she could still vote.
Well, it was a workshop.
It was.
No, I'm just saying, so I'm questioning, because in terms, if it's not a voting meeting, you know...
It's just minutes to say you agree. I'm more comfortable because it's a workshop. I don't know that I think you need to be making a motion or seconding if you're on Zoom for an agenda item at a nighttime meeting.
Right.
But 70 minutes are fine.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. Item 18 is to consider the minutes of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners regular meeting on August 23, 2022. regular meeting on August twenty-third, Commissioner Murray was absent. Do we have a motion to approve? Ms. Ward with a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. It'd be six, zero, one with Commissioner Murray abstaining. Item nineteen is consider appraisal contract with Fletcher and Company Professional Services for right-of-way acquisition for Hammond Drive and West Poplar Street, intersection improvement in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Make a motion to. We have a motion for that, Commissioner McCord, we have a second by Mrs. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Exitements to consider a contract with Manly Acquisition Services LLC Professional Services for right-of-way acquisition for West Poplar and Hammond Drive Intersection Improvements in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by, who is the second?
Right.
Brock, Mr. McCord. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-one is to consider contract with Quality Construction by McElroy Inc., low bidder in the amount of seven hundred ninety-nine thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty cents per milling and resourcing for the twenty twenty-two L-Meck program. Ms. Ward with a motion, with a second. Second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-two is consider purchase and installation of a hundred thousand kilowatt generator in the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred eighty dollars from Rose Service First Inc., doing business as Brown Electric Company, lowest quote received. This is for the PD. Mrs. Murray with a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-three is consider an annual equitable sharing agreement and certification report with the United States Department of Justice for federal asset forfeiture funds. Do we have a motion to approve? Ms. Murray with a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-four is consider a contract with the city of Griffin Southeastern Woodpole Inspector's Inc., SWPI, procured through ECG joint purchasing agreement for annual pole inspections and maintenance, not to exceed the amount of ten thousand dollars. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-five is to consider the purchase of one two thousand twenty-three F-150 XL truck from, for Griffin Power Sourcewell Contract in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred twelve dollars and seventy-six cents, and declaring surplus unit thirty-eight thirteen, a two thousand thirteen F-150, and amend the budget accordingly. Mr. McCord with a motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Consider resolution to amend the city of Griffin fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget to re allocate thirty-eight thousand from the Stormwater Utility Capital Vehicle Fund to the Stormwater Utility Repair and Maintenance Service Fund for the purpose of critical repairs to a tract loader. Mrs. Ward with a motion, second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item twenty-seven is consider resolution authorizing the advance of real property land and building at one twenty-two West Bank Street, together with the vacant lot approximately sixty by thirty feet immediately adjacent to and on the south side of the building at one twenty-two West Bank Street to the Downtown Development Authority of the City of Griffin, Georgia, to be used as a public-private economic development project to be funded in part by the Downtown Development State Revolving Fund from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and Georgia Cities Foundations, Inc., authorized the city and its DVA to make application for said funding with Fox City Brewing Company LLC as sub-recipient in making fun findings of support and cooperation for said project. Ms. Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Thank you to staff for your hard work. I know this has been going off for several years, so good work. And twenty-eight. Consider executive, oh, so before going to executive session, we're going to go ahead and do city manager report, city attorney report, city manager.
Yes, thank you for the recognition of Dr. Keller tonight, if he's well deserved. This is probably the first meeting he's had without one since nineteen ninety-three. So the agenda sitting on his seat is a little hard to look at. His family is hosting a celebration of life barbecue at Historic City Hall on Saturday from one to five. They have asked that we invite the public to come by and join them. They really like to hear stories and just share times that everybody happened, and I know there are plenty. So if you'll come by and support them. Also, just wanted to congratulate all of those that were recognized tonight. I think it goes to show you that we have some pretty fantastic employees, and I'm glad to be a part of that. So Investigator McKinney, Carrie Stevens, the Water Department for what they do, our edit team. You may not know that some of those sitting up here tonight are Hispanic and Latino heritage, so that's why they're here. And so it's nice to see all of that sort of come together. Also, our Griffin Police Department, who is here in force tonight, has a golf tournament this weekend. So Friday night is dinner at the Historic City Hall as well. And then the golf tournament at the city course on Saturday morning. Don't forget CGA on Thursday night at six. It will be in here with Danielle Hancock for Communications and Public Relations. We'll also be talking about our fiber services and our golf course. It's going to be amenities and quality of life that we provide in the city of Griffin. So if you weren't able to be here last week and want to be introduced, we'd be happy to have you this week. Also, just want to give you a little bit of a heads up that next meeting, the ninth of the twenty-seventh, will be the Mr. Chad Jacobs Show. I think he has nine public hearings.
Bring your pillow.
Just definitely eight, possibly nine.
Yeah, unfortunately, they just all came in at the same time. And so by all, when we have to meet that through forty-five days, we don't have a way to split them out. We'll try our very best to get through as quickly as possible. We are trying to limit other things that we put on the agenda or put it on consent, but you may see a rather lengthy agenda come out for the twenty-seventh, and I apologize in advance. Now we'll be quiet.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Mr. Webb.
Just very briefly, recall back in April, y'all passed resolutions to advance refund our two thousand twelve water and sewer bonds. And we're having a pre-closing on the twenty-seventh. Now, you've got a workshop that morning at nine o'clock. We can set the pre-closing at eleven. We'll actually only need Doug, Jessica there to sign documents that time. But we'd like to invite all of you to be with us at noon that day for lunch. We're still trying to make arrangements as to where to have it, what time. But the actual closing of the bonds will occur on October the fourth. So we'll sign the documents early in advance, so we'll be ready to close on the morning of the fourth. So I hope all of you can attend. If you would, let Susan know, so she'll know how many we planned for.
And thank you for your counsel there, because if we waited till this month to do it, we wouldn't have had any savings whatsoever.
You've got an absolutely fabulous deal out of this.
Yes, sir.
The savings are better today, frankly, than what we had anticipated back in April.
Yes, sir. Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brock.
Good to see everybody. Full house almost, just about one time we had full house in here. And it's, it's sometimes it gets, it gets long some sudden, I've been talking deep to you. Thank y'all for being here, just wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Ms. Commissioner Murray.
To reiterate what Commissioner Brock said, so good to see everybody. And my condolences and prayers go out to Dr. Keller's family and staff and friends. Very fortunate to have them, and you were very lucky for all the years that we did have them. I'm proud of them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Flowers.
No comment.
Commissioner Ward.
No comment.
Commissioner Tinsley.
I would like to congratulate Jason McKinney, myself, for the act he did, save the Jones line. I can congratulate all of our first responders in Griffin, whether they be men in blue, the fire staff, they're all good. Proud to be a city commissioner with these guys, so. Look at your back. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner McCord.
Frank Keller, a stellar employee. I worked for him as a lifeguard. I met him at the city pool, and we ended up, yeah, exactly. He fired me, by the way. And it's me to reflect that, that he did fire me. But, um.
He finally admitted it.
Well, he fired me, but I got my job back. Long story. But anyway, we were friends, and I just couldn't find myself being sad about his past. I was just, I just thought of a happy time. We did all the stuff, the Wednesday night supper club together, we had a great time together. And he will definitely be missed. But with that being said, I do want to address Mr. Holberg and say congratulations, because he is going to gain a son-in-law this Saturday. And we are extremely happy for the Holberg family, losing your daughter, but gaining. Are you really losing her?
Well, she, she likes to brag that she will no longer be a Holberg. It's like.
So that's nice, and it helped her too, she gets to change that name. But anyway, congratulations, she's a fine young lady. Watched her grow up to become the lady that she is today, so congratulations to her.
And just want to encourage any of you that have, my, my son is at Fort Benning, so your grads from Ward will be looking at resumes how well your children are. So if you don't get to spend, I mean, if you, moms and dads, if you still have kids, enjoy every single minute, because once they grow up, they're gone, and you just miss them every day. So it's unbelievable. To all the folks out here tonight, we are so glad to have you here. We've got your backs a hundred percent, and we're proud of you, your hard work, your dedication. And today I was, had the thrill of going to Crescent Road Elementary School and talking to second grade students and talking about what we provide in terms of services. And get to go to Atkinson this week, and then to Jordan Dale, and going to Cal Road next week. And so just listening to the kids and the questions they ask, they're studying in terms of what we do as the local government, and it's exciting to get the feedback from them as second graders of how they want to make a difference in our community. And the questions they ask is very pertinent to our everyday lives. So just thank each and every one of you for what you do. Dr. Keller was a dear friend of mine as well, and I learned a lot. I remember my first small business affairs committee with Quanis Club in ninety-two. I went to him and asked him about planting plants in the city park, and he showed me what he wanted done. And then just his motivation and his straight pointedness in terms of, of giving you a constructive criticism that makes you better. And he was very good about that, and you know, he wasn't shy, he wasn't bashful. But, you know, it's just a strange feeling to not know that he's not sitting here at five o'clock every day worrying about this community in terms of our water and our wastewater, and just how to continually make our community a better place. And so we've all got to step up and do our part to keep making Griffin the best place it can be for one Griffin. So that being said, we're going to move into executive session. So consider executive session pursuant to OCGA fifty-fourteen, two, one, for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employees, or in which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved pursuant to OCGA section fifty-fourteen, three, V, one, B, for the purpose of authorizing negotiations to purchase, dispose of, or lease property, and pursuant to OCGA section fifty-fourteen, three, V, two, for the purpose of discussing or deliberating upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation rating of a public officer or employee. That being said, we have a motion, a motion by Commissioner McCord, second by Mrs. Murray. All in favor, please signal by the background. Again, thank you all for being here.